All right, well, I want to welcome everyone on apparently on Zoom meeting for the Wareham Zonic Board of Appeal for tonight. Wednesday, December 9, 2020, and it is 6:39 PM. And apparently it's a Zoom meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to make a roll call. Everyone start saying their name. Start by Veronica.
Veronica Debonis.
Okay, this is Sample, your name?
Richard Sample.
Okay, Jim?
Jim Acabachi.
Okay. Jake Morrison?
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Okay, one second. And Mr. Conte?
Christopher Clanty.
Okay, very well, one, two, three, four, five, and myself. All right, we have six members. Okay, very good. Slaven's on. Who? Mr. Allen?
Alan Slaven's also on.
Okay, Mr. Slaven. Hi, Alan, how are you? Okay, I have on my phone because he couldn't log in, Mr. Charles Lawley, professional engineer and independent consultant for the town of Wareham. Okay, very good. We're gonna start with our preliminary business. Four dash eighteen, Giancola Partners LLC special permit extension request for seventy-two minute F. Anyone here from Mr. Mike? Mike Giancola?
Mike Giancola is here.
Okay, Mike, just, just ask us what do you want?
I, I'd like to extend my permit now that I've got the engineering squared away and Charlie's approval. Since we came back before you to raise the grade afoot. We finally finished with sort of a game of who's on first between GAF and Charlie and finally got Charlie's review and and blessing of the plans. And so I guess I'd like to extend it for another two years if that's possible.
When was, when is the permit expired, Mike?
I think this month of December.
Okay, and you need two year to start construction?
No, but I, I think the first permit was good for two years, so I guess I'm just asking for that amount of time again. You know, I, I plan to get my site work started here. I don't think this winter, but, but this spring anyway.
All right, very good. All right, anyone from board member have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It seems Mike already started by clearing the land and adding fill and so forth and so on. Doesn't that constitute that he's begun?
Basically, it is, but maybe he needs it for a bank or something. Do you understand that, Mike? Once you start, I mean faithfully start, your permit is good.
You know, I, I thought it was too, but I got a notice from either Ken's office or via Dave Requena that said my permit was about to expire and I needed to request an extension. That's why I'm.
I guess, I guess it's fine. I think it's fine. You, you're good, but I don't see a problem myself was extending, extending the permit. Who's just spoke? We, just everybody, please, because we're too many people, let's, let's not talk over each other. Who just said something?
David Requena.
Hey, David, how are you? So what's up?
How are you?
Good. Okay, so for the record, also, we have Mr. Requena, building commissioner online. Go ahead, David.
Just to clarify, Naz, clearing the land does not constitute exercising his approval.
Ah, okay, all right, very well. So that explains it, guys. So, uh, okay, what's the wishes of the board?
So this is Chris Conti. It looks like that this was approved on October 10th, 2018.
Right.
So it's, it's already expired. Am I not correct?
It is, but.
I know you have to give the 20 days for the, so they're bringing October 30th, but, but I have no problems with it.
I mean, I mean, if it's, it's not a very sensitive permit, so I don't see a problem with it myself, so. Plus, due to COVID and stuff, we just have to be a little sensitive to everybody. So, okay, so we got, uh, we need five people on this, so Mr. Conte will sit on that. All right, can I have a motion on that?
So moved, I make a motion to extend for a minimum of two years.
Motion to extend permit four dash eighteen for seventy-two minute F for two years. So that puts it to, what do you say, Mr. Conte, October or November?
I'd say from the date that it was issued, from the, from, you know, from whatever the official expiration date is, rather than making up a new date.
Okay, what was the, what was, when was it expired, Mike?
I don't have it in front of me, but that fellow said, uh, October.
October 10th? It looks like it was received at the town clerk's office, but you have to wait at least the 20 days after that, right? Just in case there's any objections to it. So I would say October 30th would be the date.
So we'll extend to October 30th, 2022. Does that sounds right?
Perfect, perfect.
All right, very good. So I have a motion by Jim, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye, Chris Conti.
We have to roll call that motion?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Aye, Richard Sample.
All right.
His permit ended in October this year.
Aye, Richard Sample.
Who just spoke, ma'am? Do you want to identify yourself?
Why don't you mute so while the board is taking a, a discussion?
All right, let's do some discussion. Who, who would like to speak on this permit? Who's there to? I heard a lady saying something.
Who, me?
I heard somebody said something about the permit expiring. Who was it?
Um, I think maybe it might have been me, Maureen Cruz.
What's your name, ma'am?
What you'd like to say, ma'am?
Well, I'd like to know how far, like, you know, I mean, what's it gonna be like? I've been here for like 30 years and I have a lot of woods in my, in the back of my house. Is, is this thing going to be in the back of my house? Is it going to be high? Is it going to be low? I mean, we have no information as to what he's building back there.
Well, the, the hearing was heard back in, back in 2018 or nine, I believe, 2018, around June or, 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 and the, like, in the summer. I mean, you were, you were notified by mail then.
I don't remember getting anything by mail because when I got this, I had to go to the post office to get it because it required a signature.
Right.
Can I interrupt?
No, no, one second, Mike. Go ahead. Go ahead, keep saying.
It involves my property, you know, I, I would have wanted to be a part of. I didn't know that this was going on.
How long, okay, but you, you must have received the notice from before.
I just told you, I, they said that I had to sign for it. They didn't leave it in mailbox this time. I had to go down to the post office and get it.
Okay, then two years ago, did you get that same notice about two years ago?
No. I wouldn't remember.
Think she's mixed up.
There was no, there was no notice that was sent on this, on this application. She's talking about the project.
All right, Mike, Mike, can you say what do you want to say?
Mr. Chairman, I think she might be mixing up the projects. There's, there's no residential butter to this project.
Okay, behind you is the railroad, right? Then it's wet.
Yes, yes, yes.
Ma'am, are you talking about that same project?
Mine at F.
Mine at F is across from the school. Are you the same, you're talking about the same project?
The, um, is it Littleton?
Oh, no, 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 you are the wrong, okay, very good. That's a completely different one. Okay, you, you're talking about different, that, that, we'll talk about that project very soon, but you're on the wrong, you're talking about the wrong project. All right, anyone, anyone want to discuss this project about mine at F? Anyone have to say anything?
Okay, so in other words, this doesn't affect my house at all or my property.
That's, we get into you, ma'am. Yes, Charlie, go ahead. One second, everyone.
All right, honey, thank you.
You can mute it.
Yes.
Uh, no.
When, Mike, so you're talking, Charlie, it's two years from the mine, when the mine modification came in? Right. Mike, do you recall when you came for the minor modification for that?
Uh, Naz, I think it was in June or July, but I honestly don't remember the exact date.
June or July this year?
Yes.
Did everyone get that? Mr. Lowly saying the time we modify, it pushes another two years from that date, which is in the summer sometimes this year. I don't recall, I don't have any paperwork and stuff.
We, we couldn't hear what he said, actually.
He needs to be closer to the speakers or something.
Who's trying to speak?
All right. Did you get this, Mike?
Uh, no, I did not, Nazia.
Well, what Mr. Lowly saying, when you came for the modification, did you record the modification?
Uh, no, I was never given any, any paperwork on the modification to record.
Kenny, when he came for minor modification, we, we should have gave him something.
It was a minor modification, there was no, uh, that's, um, action necessary except for the vote of the board.
Okay, so that, that, there it go. There was no action necessary. So anyway, let's go forward, we have a long night. So the motion was given by Jim. Do I have a second by Jake? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Richard Sample.
Aye, Chris Conti.
Aye, Veronica Debonis.
Nazia.
Okay, and aye, Nazia Akalasi. Okay, very well.
Nazia, I, I'd like to say that it was Wednesday, July 8th, that he came asking for the mine modification.
Wednesday, July, who's speaking?
It's Richard Sample. I have the, I have the paper in front of me when, when he brought the modification in.
Right, but if it wa, if it wasn't recorded, Mr. Lowly saying it doesn't mean, I mean, it's, it's legit, but it doesn't push the two years from, uh, from July. So anyway, he get the extension, so thank you, thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, we move to the second one. Two dash eighteen, the corner partners and substantial modification respect three, uh, request three one zero two Cranberry Highway. Who we have here for that?
Peter Freeman speaking. Oh, can you hear me? I think I'm off mute.
No, you're fine.
Thank you. Peter Freeman, attorney representing Dakota, and from Dakota, we have Mark Pilot and Russ Tanner. We also have our engineer, Dominique Rinaldi. So, uh, first thing, there was a typo in the letter. I think I did the same thing last time, I apologize. The unit as, the, the project as permitted, the comprehensive permit for the rental apartments is 150 units. So I think the beginning of my letter had a higher number and I apologize. The reason we're here is there's no change in the number of units, there's no change in the buildings, unit count, anything like that. But as you recall, back, I think, in, in May, there was an approval of a slight change in the lot lines and related things, and you approve that. And here, it is another request for a change in the lot lines that relate to the phasing. Again, there's no real substantive change. I'm going to let most of the substantive description be described by Mark Pilot and by, by our engineer, Dominique. So, uh, two things, just a bit of, a bit of an update. They really look like there's a, a strong chance of getting started in the spring because they did get the, at least a verbal, a verbal notice from DHCD for the tax credits having been awarded this month. So that should hold up and therefore they'd be able to go forward. The, the main impetus for the request is because of COVID and what it's done to evictions and all of that and ability to relocate people. You recall that, um, the motel is something that is going to be demolished. Obviously, we have to relocate tenants first, and it is much more difficult under current circumstances. And so that plus other things have taken the time to get to this point. And that process has started, Mark will say more, um, you know, following all appropriate laws with the current owner and things. But what it's, what it's done is, you know, we, we want to make sure that because of the current uncertainty, that we go forward with phase one. And that the motel, uh, and I have a changed motion at the end of my notice letter. I included a proposed motion, should you agree that this is insubstantial. So, uh, if, when we get to the end of the, of the presentation, I'll just tell you what we think would be appropriate changes under these circumstances, which would be basically to say that the motel will still be demolished essentially part of phase one, but put a timeframe after the final occupancy permits for the second building in phase one. And basically have a clause that relates to if things are beyond our control. So that's the main reason to do it. And there are some changes which, uh, which Mark spoke with Ken Buckland about. And as shown on the plans related to some, some changes to the access that will be necessary, not, not on a permanent basis, unless I'm misspeaking, but Mark and Dom will go into that, uh, and also the utilities. So let me stop with that and, and just turn it over to Mark to give you more of the, more of the background and why we're here.
All right, Mark, if you please explain to us which, which phases you swapping on and where is phase two or three or one?
Go ahead.
Absolutely, we'll go through that with you. Dominic will lay out the plans, he'll share the screen, uh, showing you the changes, uh, that we're proposing. As Peter mentioned, back in May, we, we came to you with the notice of, uh, change that we went through. And that was, that was at the time when culvert started kicking in. And obviously, it was very challenging at best just to get the hearing to happen. Over the course of this past summer, we've had our other projects under construction and going through other projects. We've recognized and realized the difficulty in today's world to get a project done, get it leased up and get it going. And then take in consideration this motel, we need to now look at relocation during that period of time. And that's why we're here. The phase where we had the motel in was the first phase. And one of the buildings is located right on top of the motel. So it's difficult to try to build it and relocate them at the same time. Proposing is to take our original, uh, phase two, uh, project and make that phase one. The buildings and the unit counts are still the same, uh, same number of units, same type of footprint of buildings. Nothing's changed in that respect at all.
All right, Mark, just let me cut you off quick. Phase two is the first two building on the left, right behind the motel, right?
That was, that was the phase one that we came into you back in May and we had it changed. So that's the phase one, it included the clubhouse, which we introduced as part of that new lot line change.
All right, so where is phase two that you don't start with?
It's the back side, it's towards the back.
The two building way on the back.
That is correct, that is correct.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, hi, Dominic Rinaldi, BSC, would you like me to do a screen share now?
Yeah, let's do this, and this, this way, and you can speak as we talk and as you talk, so everybody could see. Go ahead.
Okay, well, with that said, I think, you know, Dom.
So everybody had that.
One, one of the things that Peter mentioned was the entrance. Our entry points are still the same entry points, they're not changing. And regardless, we will look at building both of those entries out, uh, day one, due to the fact that Cranberry Highway is under construction. We want to make sure that everything is done prior to, or being put on to that road. Those will still be in the, the first phase, we'll work those into the phase. Dominic can take you through the plan and walk you through, uh, the phasing of it. Dominic?
Sorry, let me take myself off mute. Good evening, Dominic Rinaldi with BSC Group, uh, civil engineers and surveyors for the project. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, as you were asking, so previously approved or currently approved, I guess, sort of roughly this area here that's in gray, if you can see my cursor.
Yeah.
You know, up the, the west side of the property, uh, here's the existing motel. The two buildings there, uh, roughly, that was phase one, um, along with the, the clubhouse, which is roughly here. What we're requesting now is actually the two buildings that would be here and here. So this would be the revised phase one. If you can see that, so it would be, um, the access drive off of Redbrook Road, the access drive into the community building here, up around the parking and these two buildings. Previously. Get the right one here. What is currently approved is this is phase one, where we came in off of Cranberry Highway and had these two buildings and the community building, along with the driveway on Redbrook Road for access to the community building.
Okay, very good. I had a chance to discuss this with Tom Platter, Mr. Buckland. If everybody understand what's going on, the corner partner, instead of starting these two buildings, the first two on the left, they're gonna start the two in the back and they're gonna save the motel, eventually move the motel people to the, to the buildings they built or relocate them, which is, I totally agree. This is a tough time to throw everybody out the motel right now. So hopefully, when they build, whoever wants to move with them or who wants to leave, give them more time, at least will be over COVID and it'd be nice and warm, hopefully, towards the spring or the summer. Does everybody understand that? Start by Veronica, do you understand what's going on?
I do, I have a question about the people in the motel.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, are the, are the people in the motel offered housing in this unit that's?
Yes, yes, they are offered to be relocated then. That's from the beginning of the hearing, right? Mr. Pilot, Mr. Mark?
It happened for the, the apartment buildings that we're building, there's an application process and they'll go through that application process.
Between now and the point where the, the building is done, they will be, we'll be working with them on a relocation, either there or someplace else. So we'll be working closely with them.
Right, so if they qualify, they could then go in one of the buildings?
That is, that is correct.
Right, that's the intent, correct.
Right. Okay, you good, Veronica?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, this one, Mr. Sample will vote on this, Richard. Okay, so, Miss Richard, while I have you, do you have any question?
No, I don't, sir.
All right, Jim?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is it feasible that the revised phase one, that's currently the phase two altered? Is it possible? Is it feasible? In the wildest stretch of one's imagination, could this phase be built? The motel stay, the project go belly up and the motel never get torn down? And the, the project never be done in three phases?
Everything is possible, I would say, but I guess the intention for them to build it and make money. So, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, thank you. And we anticipated questions like that because naturally, you know, we, we're, we thought of that. That's one of the reasons I mentioned that we do have the, uh, the award, again verbally, but I'm, I have no doubt they'll follow up for the first phase. The proposed vote that I included at the end of the letter, um, we can put it up on the screen if it'll be helpful, but what we suggest is to.
Yeah, can you put it on the screen, Counselor?
Dom, yeah.
While you're speaking, yeah, there you go, go ahead.
Yep, so.
Blow it up, Dominic.
So after the language that was there before, which says that, you know, you approve, basically, yes, per my, my letter with a proper reference to the dates, you approve those as insubstantial changes. But then what we suggest, and I think it does speak to, to Jim's question, I think that was Jim. We add what you would put in the, the, the vote with demolition of the motel to begin within 90 days, weather permitting, of the date when occupancy permits for the second building in phase one. You know, so that's when it will be done, unless demolition of the motel is delayed due to circumstances beyond the applicant's control. So it would be really a condition that, you know, we don't get to not do it, um, even if we never do phase two. This would mean that it will be done, you know, we might not be able to get it, uh, started exactly the 90 days that we're suggesting in this, uh, draft vote. But the circumstances beyond the applicant's control wouldn't be permanent, but we've already lived through more, you know, construction delays, which would include demo delays because of COVID. We hope it'll be better naturally with the vaccine, et cetera. But those are the types of unforeseen circumstances. So it wouldn't be a, you know, a, um, a, a non diligent situation where they just say, well, we're going to do it whenever we want. There is a condition that you could enforce.
Okay, Jim, is that satisfaction, satisfactory view?
It's, it's. It's partway there. I don't see why a performance bond can't be posted and that the occupancy permits would be conditional upon demolition. And I don't know that they need 90 days, I would think 30 is adequate. I could have that building down in a week.
You, well, you're absolutely correct, but there is environmental that we have to take care of within the building, remediation and go through the proper protocols. And I, I think as Peter mentioned, I, we found it on many of our jobs, things have slowed down due to COVID and it really has hindered the, the schedules a lot.
Counselor, let me say something. So with, let everybody understand, so you're gonna build phase two. After phase two is done, those two buildings, you will start the demolition, then you go into phase one and three, correct?
Well, but what we recall, what, what's now called phase two, those buildings would become phase one. And so we wouldn't, we're not asking to wait until we get to a next phase.
Right.
We would have to within 90, we'd have to start demo, demolition within, um, 90 days of getting the certificates of occupancy for both buildings in, uh, uh, phase one, the new phase one. And the reason that that suggestion by, by Jim is, is difficult, although I understand the reasoning, is simply that, you know, we, we want to make sure we have the buildings available. There are, there, there are eight tenants, but we want to make sure that there's units that they will be able to go to. And although the timing likelihoods are that it would work out, uh, but that's why we don't want to have to have the, the certificate, certificates of occupancy withheld until the start of the demo starts. And the lenders candidly might be quite unhappy with that and that would cause another problem and.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that occupancy be withheld. I was suggesting the performance bond be posted four and a half times the value of tearing that building down and that no further permits would be issued until it was down. No phase one, no phase two, no phase three until it's down.
Well, not phase one, phase one would already be built.
You're gonna do phase one, I said, no, no phase two, no phase three until.
Yeah, I hear you.
Down.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said. I do understand your reasoning and, um, you know, Mark and Russ, uh, you know, that, to me, I don't mind saying openly, you know, it seems like a, um, a logical response to the situation. I don't know if you need time to talk privately with me or text or if you can talk about it now.
I, I personally, I think a performance bond for the value of what needs to be done is a reasonable request from Jim. That's my personal feeling on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take a year to build.
This was, just, just so you understand where I'm coming from, I'm not opposed to your project and I know your project's gonna go forward, but there was, you know, a great deal of heat and discontent amongst the community. And I want the community to know that sitting on the board, we're, we're worried about the community. We don't want somebody in the community thinking that you're gonna build a partial project, leave an obsolete, functionally obsolete structure or abandoned structure. We just want, you know, we're just gonna demonstrate that we're watching out for the community and I, and I appreciate you being willing to post a performance bond.
All right, so what you're saying, Jim, you need, let's say the, the demolition costs 50,000, it's 150%, so they need $75,000 bond, right?
Correct. One and a half times the cost.
Counselor, you okay with that or Mark?
Yes, that, that, that's standard, that's, that's totally reasonable.
All right, very well. And the bond will be issued to the town of Wareham, of course. So, all right, so we could do that.
Can I just mention it, just a quick technicality? If you just, on, on a vote, just do it as bond or, or other surety, because sometimes a letter of credit is easier or something like that, as opposed to.
That is correct. Thank you, Peter.
All right, so, but you will, you will modify your draft, Counselor, with the, with the language and send it to the, the Mr. Buckland, right?
Sure, you know, I think it's time for you to take a vote because it's pretty simple, but, um, you know, yes, I'll absolutely send it out to you guys, yep.
All right, so now we go, okay, thanks, Jim. Now we go to Jake. Jake, you have any question or comment?
No questions.
Mr. Conte?
I, I do have a question. It says, um, that the driveway entrance on Cranberry Highway would be constructed at the conclusion of phase one after the motel demolition? Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, uh, because obviously, there's a lot going on out there with the. That is correct, uh, because obviously there's a lot going on out there with the Cranberry Highway. And we just gotta coordinate with them during that period of time. Um, so that everything lines up properly and then disconnect all the utilities.
So, so um. So where's the entrance gonna be? Is the entrance gonna be in the same way? How are you, how are you gonna get in and out of the buildings again?
Red Book Road.
It's the same location. It's in the same location. Doesn't change.
Okay, there's two entrances.
Right. So there's the entrance on Cranberry Highway, which. It's hard to see in the scale, but it's it's would be right here is where it's going to be. Um, and then ultimately in future phases, you can see that the driveway and the connection to the back.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And I'm okay.
I have a quick question, Nazzy.
Who's speaking?
Richard Simple.
Yeah, Mr. Simple, go ahead.
Just, just something struck me uh, that I would like to understand. He said that they were gonna relocate the people from the hotel.
Right.
As long as they qualify.
Is there a qualifying process that could keep these people from moving?
Absolutely. Not from moving, from occupying.
Well, the 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 answer, and you did hear that correctly, uh, Mr. Simple. Um, you know, it, I guess we probably have been assuming that they income wise qualify as the uh, um. Uh, income limits under the permit and under the program with the HCD, the tax credits. Uh, and so, you know, that if if they meet those income limits, then they would be eligible as the uh, you know, first batch of tenants. Um, if they, you know, if they are over income, then it wouldn't change compliance with various state and I think even federal uh, relocation. Requirements, but then they they they, small chance, I believe, but then they wouldn't qualify based on their income. For our units, but from the information, I don't have it directly, so I wanna be careful, but from. The discussions that I believe Marcus had, it it looks like they would qualify, but I I have to be clear, you know, if for some reason they were over income, then they wouldn't qualify.
So if they don't qualify, then that means they're not moving and then that then the hotel won't come down.
Well, a lot of our responsibility is to relocate them in.
Right.
Uh, in the buildings that we're building or someplace else, it will be done.
Counselor, let me say something.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Sample, but I believe whoever lives in these motels. They don't have a long term lease. They are tenant at twelve as a motel. So. What I believe what uh, the corner partner is doing are courtesy relocate them. I think. You could just give them a week notice or a day notice if they pay weekly or daily. I don't think. It's it's a, it's like a trailer, like a trailer park or an apartment building that could say, not moving. It's not that. It's not the same. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Freeman.
No, that's correct. There's always a question, how long will it take? But um, you know, even a lease would expire at some point and, you know, there's never, there's never that I know of and I do this all the time. Uh, there's never an outright, you know, permanent prohibition on uh, having a tenant, you know, face the fact that they do have to move. So it it really becomes a question of time. And as I say, the efforts have already started. Um, and that's the way it will work.
All right, and we hope it works for everyone. All right. So that being said, uh, okay, what's the wishes of the board? Yes, okay, Mr. Rowley wanna ask question? Go ahead. Yeah, right. I think the Red Book Road is is for Red Book Road and twenty eight is like a loop access. So I guess they're gonna use Red Book Road right now. And then use, uh, do the access from twenty eight. Mister, Mister, uh, Mark, correct me?
That is, that is correct. In the original uh, phase one, we had access to both of them in the original phase one because we needed access to the clubhouse. In this case here, uh, by moving the phase one to the phase two location, all we have to worry about is access off of Red Book for now. And then to the future phases, we'll build up the balance of that loop.
Got that Charlie? But as far as that. The final permit has phase one first and the phase two. The stage two, not over the next one, but then we go now, we're going to. Move the access road. So you're talking on the permit, the final permit that's gonna be a binder during construction or or a fine stain only binder?
Mark, is Derek, are you asking?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah.
Nazzy, we can't hear Charlie or Riley on the on the speaker.
All right, Mr. 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 Um, Mark or who who's in charge with engineering, Mark or the other gentleman?
Oh, Dominic, but.
Dominic. Did you understand what Mr. Rowley is saying? He wants to have a binder at least from Red Book Road, not say in the dirt.
Oh, yeah, got you.
Yeah, yeah. So for phase one, this is going to be this, this portion of the road. You can see if you can see the little hand cursor.
Yeah.
Uh, coming up right. This is gonna be finished.
Yeah.
This is finished pavement. This is the access to the back of the site for the residents to, well, for everywhere from the residents. So this will be, this driveway from Red Brook Road all the way back to the temporary cul-de-sac here will be completed.
You got that, Charlie?
We're going to talkative.
On your. On your. Uh, one second, Charlie. Mrs. Galaxy, S ten Galaxy, Mrs. Mrs. Galaxy. Can can you, can you mute this lady? Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, all right. So did you get this, Mark or Mr. Freeman?
I could not hear.
I I really can't hear anything that he's saying. I mean, I catch a word.
Say that again, Charlie. All right, listen to this. Say that again, Charlie, please.
Mr. Freeman. Has suggested as one of the forms of security, a letter of credit. I do not recommend that the board accept a letter of credit. Performance bonds or an insurance bond is cheap enough. And is the type of thing that can be extended if need be. I do just do not recommend that you accept any kind of a letter of credit.
All right. What do you have to say for that, Mr. Freeman?
Well, uh, you know, respectful disagreement. I mean, I can tell you that on probably ninety percent. Probably even a hundred percent of my forty Bs as well as other permits. Um, you know, a letter of credit is acceptable and even under the, you know, regular uh, uh, chapter forty one subdivision statute. You know, it calls for um, you know, a variety of 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 alternatives, including an agreement with the lender, you know, that there's a holdback. So.
Hey, the question is, Mr. Freeman, is it possible to get a performance bond? I mean, is that a problem?
It could be, yes.
Uh, it could be.
Yes, and that's why, that's why having the flexibility of having the letter credit as well. If we find that our lenders are balking or pushing back on it, we always have an alternative.
Mark?
I I couldn't.
Now, we have access to the fund if you have a letter of credit.
Oh, it's 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 posted with with the town or an escrow agent, but basically, no, it's not. You don't even need an escrow agent. It's issued as for the town as the beneficiary. And there's pretty much an automatic trigger that will, you know, say, you know, that uh. If they send the notice when the certain conditions, which is easy to describe here, you know, the the failure to demo as required. Um, it it's automatic. They notify the town. At the time notifies the uh, the lender who issued the credit and it's automatic money in the bank.
I don't think a letter of credit works like this. It's like a credit, like based on your credit, the bank would. In insure you for, say, a hundred thousand, just like your credit card. That's not actual money there, right? Correctly, Mark?
Correct. It's not cash. I mean, theoretically, cash could be posted too, but the letter of credit is, it's like a um. Uh, you know, a future commitment to pay the money upon simply notice from the town and the developer accepts the fact that the town isn't gonna. Frivolously or, you know, make up reasons to, you know, to send in, you know, a claim if, and it's very demonstrable. Again, there's not much judgment called here. You might be worried about niceties of. What were the construction standards or road building standards, but that doesn't enter into this because we're talking about the demolition of a motel. And it either starts and happens or it doesn't.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Ken.
Uh, the form of the uh, uh, six of the surety has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, so it'll be up to them to make the determination as to what.
Well, 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 I mean, you know, forty, you know, it's not that big a deal, but you know, the point is. The reason for the comprehensive quote unquote permit is the zoning board, you know, does have the authority and it just, it's like one stop shopping. So. It's just makes sense for, you know, for the for the type of security to be dealt with now. Um, and as I say, I can honestly tell you, I'm not never gonna say a hundred percent, but the vast, vast majority. Of my projects of all kinds, you know, letter of credit is a sufficient, a lot of them have chosen to simply have an agreement with the bank where the bank, you know, holds back uh, the same one point five percent. Um, which is, which allowed under the subdivision statute. It's so standard, I'm surprised it's such a big deal for Mr. Rowley to be.
If I may.
One second. I.
Really, Nazzy.
Okay, let's, we we go on too complicated now. Mr. Freeman, we, if if we, if the board says a bond or letter of credit, Mr. Buckland's right, it's the. Selectman who's gonna decide how it's drafted, how it's written, and the town administrator has to approve it. So we'll do, we'll let the board decide if they're gonna take letter of credit or a bond and let the selectman deal with it. Does that sound right?
Oh, sure. That, that's fine. That's fine. I don't, I don't mind have the exact wording and detail. That's fine. That's reasonable.
Okay, Mr. Slaver, what are you saying, something?
Yes, uh, sorry to interrupt. A couple of things. The Board of Selectmen met uh, probably a couple of weeks ago. Very concerned about this project because the people in the motel were going to be evicted. And uh, at that point there, we were really not in favor of much of anything happening with this project until things were resolved. We were informed through our town council that there was some type of resolution where basically they were going to. Not evict the people immediately there. Uh, the real reason, of course, is they were changing where they were gonna bring the sewer and therefore they didn't have to knock the building down. As part of, because they're also going to conservation for that as well. Uh, our concern still is going to be, from what I can see is when that building gets knocked down, the people get evicted, obviously beforehand. There is absolutely no guarantee anybody in that particular building. And the motel will qualify or be able to get one of those places that they're going to build. So we have real concerns as the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we will definitely wanna see whatever credit you're going to give them for this particular piece, that we will approve or not approve. It's our right to do that. And just so you understand, you can put whatever you want down, but if we don't approve it, it all stops again.
Could I, the chairman?
Mr. Freeman.
I I'm not sure I quite understand, Mr. Slaven. This uh, this this permit is already approved. The motel is already a requirement by.
Counselor, Counselor, can I stop you for a second? Who's speaking? Somebody is speaking at the house and they're interrupting the meeting. Can you please uh, like mute it so we can hear each other? There's way too many people here. Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
So I just, you know, sincerely don't understand, you know, that that um, that statement because. It's already been approved. You know, I mean, it's it's already a, uh, you know, a condition. Um, and we knew it anyway that the motel has to be demolished and and so we can't go. Go backward and no disrespect whatsoever sincerely to the Board of Selectmen, but they can't stop anything like that. We have no problem with accepting a bond. If we just want a bond, that's fine. Whatever you want, bond or letter of credit, but we'll accept whatever condition you put. And I just said I have no problem with the language. Uh, of of the form of the bond, but again, I I'm not sure I fully understood what Mr. Slaven said. If he thinks that. They cannot approve a bond at that point, that's simply, you know, it's it's not me and it's not saying anything other than the reality. They they can't do that. We already.
I disagree with you, sir.
Well, I'm.
If I may, if I may interrupt, Mr. Slaven, if I may interrupt, we we had agreed on this permit with them demolishing the the motel. And work with the tenant to move the tenant. Now, if one tenant or two or three or all of them don't qualify, this is, this is their problem. I mean. We we cannot reneg on the deal. We had, we had issued a permit with demolition of the motel and that was one of our conditions. We cannot, right now. I don't see we have a leg to stand on to say we don't wanna, if you don't move the tenants, you can't go forward.
Uh, Nazzy, just so you understand, our town council met with, I think, counsel for these people. Uh, phone wise a few days back. And again, the problem was is that we were notified that the people were given eviction notices. They were gonna have to leave. And then they changed the uh, they changed the setup where they weren't gonna knock the motel down immediately. This was gonna happen before Christmas originally.
Right.
And the Board of Selectmen, uh, in the interest of the safety of those people at this time of year, were extremely upset about this happening this way.
Well, that's why, that's why they're doing this. And I don't see that these people moving before a year, correct me. I mean, will you finish that building before a year?
I'm just saying, Nazzy, that we wanna make sure because, you know, what was agreed to, the understanding people have is that these people are gonna be able to move into something else. And until Ken brought up what I called him about a few minutes ago was, there's no guarantee those people go anywhere in the new project.
All right, but let me, let everybody hear me out. How long would it take to do these two buildings? We're talking about ten months at least, right?
At least. Well, we first gotta close on the property and then it's gonna take a minimum of twelve months to build the buildings out.
Right. So if they work with these people in the next twelve months. If they work with the people in the motel to move them there, so in twelve months or fourteen months already, I don't see what's the problem. And if the people in the motel don't wanna work with these people. I mean, this is not our call right now. The zoning board gonna do what they have to do and that's gonna become. We we cannot reneg on the deal now, say we can't take the motel down. I I won't give that vote personally.
Not asking about the motel being taken down, Nazzy. My question, my, my comment was is the Board of Selectmen does not have to. Accept the instrument, the credit instrument that they basically present you. That's it. Nothing else.
So you guys do your thing and we do our thing and let them deal with you. Is that fair enough?
Yep.
That's fair. Okay, very well. All right. So anyone else wanna say something?
So I do have a question.
One second. Veronica, one second. Charlie was saying something. Go ahead, Charlie. That's what they said they are. Correct, Mark?
I couldn't hear him. I'm sorry.
You completing the road totally completed for that phase, right? Paving, landscape and completed, right?
That is correct. We'll for that phase, we'll complete everything, landscaping, the road, the parking associated with it.
Perfectly. To to Red Book Road, right, Mark?
To Red Book Road. That is absolutely correct.
You get that? Thank you. Okay, Veronica, go ahead.
Is the board making a recommendation for the surety bond or letter of credit tonight?
Yes. So the board will say, we'll see, we'll make, we'll get one last comment for Council Freeman if they're gonna do a letter of surety letter or performance bond. And the board will have to give the modification to start with phase. One versus phase two. Correct, Mark? Phase one versus two, right?
That is correct. That'll be.
Leave the motel, they finish first, phase one and work with the tenant to move them.
That is correct. We have an obligation that we'll we'll work with these tenants to relocate them. That's part of our obligation.
Okay. All right, all right, very good. Anyone else have any comment? All right. So so, Mr. Freeman, last, last thing, are you willing to do performance bond? Are you sticking with surety?
Yes. You're all right. If everybody's comfortable with a bond, that's fine. We'll just.
Very well. It makes everybody happy. Very good. All right, so.
Chairman, the only, the only other thing. Chairman, the only, the only other thing, just a quick reminder as to, you know, when you take a vote now, you know, that what we said, and I'll write it up tomorrow, but the vote is to approve what we said and say that the demolition of the motel shall begin within 90 days, whether permitting of the date when occupancy permits are issued for the second building in phase one, unless delayed by circumstances beyond the applicant's control. But I believe that Jim also said, want to add that we, which is implicit anyway. You know, it really is. But to add, which I'll write up, that, you know, no further permits would be allowed until the, you know, demolition is done.
But that right there, it could be a problem, obviously.
That's what I want to point out to you, Mark, because then you're worried about starting, you know, the next phase.
Correct. Because I'll be going in, in January with my, kind of my phase two application. And I could be approved my phase two and, and I'll be held up for a year or two. You know, a year, a year and a half, you know, to start that. You know, it's always beneficial. If I can get another one going at the same time, it makes it faster and easier. So that would be a very difficult thing right there.
All right. So Mr. Freeman, you're gonna adjust your draft. Okay, with showing that you have a performance bond and all what we spoke for and you're just gonna send it to Ken, right?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Everyone okay with that on the board with that before we take a vote? Yes, go ahead, Charlie. Mark, did you get that?
I did not.
You have to put a reference of the new plans on that letter.
Oh, yeah. Well, part of it, part of it is to approve the indoor, I mean, you know, we don't have, you, you don't have the Mylar yet. But you will, you know, if you approve this vote, you would, you're agreeing also to sign the Mylar that, that based on the, you know, on the hard copy that was sent to you that you're looking at. And so, yeah, it would be recorded. And absolutely, I mean, that's typical and that's would be covered by, you know, the fact that the language has to be worked out, but that's a correct suggestion by Mr. Rowley and it'll happen in the, of course, any ordinary course because it will be recorded.
Not the one? The construction plan, Mr. Freeman, he's referring to Mr. Rowley.
Well, there's already conditions like that for everything. I mean, if the bond refers to these plans that were submitted that are hopefully going to be approved tonight, then that speaks to Mr. Rowley's, you know, point. I have no problem with this point. I just think that, you know, it's, it's really pretty much in the ordinary course. But yes, we can reference the, the plans in, in the bond. Sure.
All right. Let me, let's, let's make this easier for everyone. It's, it's frustrating online. Is it possible that Mr. Rowley and Mr. Mark and Council Freeman talk and Mr. The, I'm horrible with names.
That's fine, yes.
Okay. Is it possible you guys talk together, including Ken, email each other so you draft that properly and make sure everybody on board?
That's not a problem.
Does that make sense, Charlie? All right. So, okay, good. So perfect. Ken, Mr. Freeman and your team, so you guys all together include each other with an email, work with Mr. Rowley, as long as what we spoke for, if everybody happy, we're good with that. Does that sound right? Sounds good?
Yes.
That, that's fine. Does that mean, I don't know when your next meeting is, that you'll, you know.
Next meeting, we're gonna make, we're gonna try to make a special meeting. We're gonna talk about it at the end of the hearing, I believe on this, I don't. We're gonna make a special meeting.
January 6th.
January 6th, because on the 23rd, the town hall is closed, okay?
Sure. Oh, yeah. No, I.
All right. So let's sort it out before then. Okay. Everyone on the board have any other questions? Are you good?
No, I got more questions.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
My, my question, I, first of all, I'm not sure we got the entire presentation that Attorney Freeman intended. There might have been more. But my question is, the new phase one, if approved, will be passing, will be passing through phase three. Phase three won't be built until third, but the, the driveway will be passing right through it. And I recall that they're only purchasing this property one parcel at a time and there were concerns about equity and ownership and ownerships and titles. And is this gonna present any problem?
My quick answer, and then Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, I think actually you're right, except that the answer is there, there will, there will be the proper cross easements. There have to be or else, you know, just primatically it wouldn't work for the developers as well as for the lenders. So that will be taken care of by cross.
That is correct. And it really won't create a problem, Jim, later on, because the, the infrastructure will be there for the, that phase. So you know, if something happens, someone can easily come in and do that, you know, the property owner himself.
Okay. That was my, that was my question. Now, my next question, if it's a question is, are there any, are there any people that are just sitting, listening to this that have comments they want to make in a way? Are we inviting comments from the public?
Anyone wanna make comment? I hear none. So let's make, let's, let's, let's make the wishes.
Do we need to decide whether this is a minor modification or a major before we can make a vote or can we just make a motion?
Well, we could make a motion. It's unsubstantial modification. So we could make modification how it's presented. I mean, we could make a motion based on what's presented.
Okay. I move that it's not a, a substantial modification. I move that we do go ahead and approve as, as the request with the with the corrections as discussed with Attorney Freeman and let them provide, you know, a draft for us to approve with the performance and the surety bond included in the language.
Okay. This one, Mr. Richard Sample will be voting on Walter's seat. So do I have a second on that? Anybody second? Okay, here a none. I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Jim.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Veronica Debonese, aye.
Richard Sample, aye.
Nazzy Alcalasi, aye. It passes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
We're gonna go to continue public hearing, 21-20, Howard Markley on 1013th Street. Mr. Markley, is he here? Okay.
No, no, no plans, revised plans were submitted to the, the planning office. So I'm assuming they, they have to be continued or denied.
Okay. Well, this is the problem, Ken. The, the extension was good until 12/23. We're not meeting on, on 23. So.
Here as the butter.
One second. Ma'am, one second. So did they send, and last time we talked, and I have my note on my book, that they need an extension in writing. Did they brought an extension in writing for you, Ken?
They submitted an extension in writing, but they did not submit the plans that they had promised and we haven't seen anything from them.
How long are the extensions for? When, what does the extension say? Until what date?
It says it right on your agenda. It says on the agenda till the 12/12/23.
I don't have it in front of me. Right. That's the extension, right? But if they requested another extension, we need it in writing. Do we have one?
It was continued to today.
Okay. Do I have further extension?
No, you do not.
Okay, very well. I recommend that we, we deny without prejudice if the, unless the board has any comments. Board members, Mr. Conti was set on this. Or maybe did Mr. Sample set on that to begin with, right? Richard, he's the one who suggested the roof pitch. And, okay, so Mr. Sample sitting on this, board, board questions. We don't have right in extension and writing. So the best thing for the board and for the town, we deny without prejudice so they could always come back and file for a new application. If we don't do anything, they could be constructively granted. So what's your wishes, everyone? We start with Veronica. Veronica, okay. What's your wishes on that? Okay, she's. Take your mute out. You muted.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, Mr. Sample.
I agree.
Okay, Jake.
I agree.
Jim?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Did we close the public portion of this hearing?
We, we will now. We will now.
Is it possible for me to say something before you all make your?
Yes. Just give us, just give us one second. So we hear from the board. We have one board member. Jake, you okay with that? He can't hear us.
Yeah, yes, I'm okay.
Mr. Conti, you good with that?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess I'm fine. I'm, I'm a little disturbed that we, you know, made this guy go back and forth and and try to change his plans. He, he came with with, with one determination that it was like is, is the size of his lot and, and the FAR, wasn't that correct? And we're making him reduce the height of his building. So I, I, I don't know. I, I wish he applied for an extension. I, I feel bad for the man. And I guess that's all I have to say.
I, I, I totally agree with you, but if we don't act, we, we risk and the, the, the town's well being, you know, we, we, we play, we're playing with fire here. If we don't, we don't do nothing. And we'd like to have the board to approve it, not a constructive grant. So I totally agree. I feel bad. I wish he followed up. So I don't know what to say. Okay, ma'am. What do you want to like to say?
Yes, I'm Holly Van Nest. I live at 1213th Street next to the, the subject property. Since the last meeting, when you all made it clear to him that, to the two of them, that the property needed to be shorter, I have had an interaction with both of them where they made it very clear that they thought 35 feet was what they should have. And they did not think it was necessary to get any lower than that. And in fact, they also went on to say that I and our, and the other butter were lousy neighbors for exercising our right to complain and give our concerns about what they were doing. So.
Everybody, everybody can speak their mind, ma'am. So I'm.
No, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about making a decision without prejudice because I don't think they have been playing fair with this process. And it doesn't make me feel good about the possibility that they could do it again.
I don't think we should take that right from them. I think it's fair enough without prejudice. And, and then again, that's my suggestion. The board may not agree. So thanks, thanks for your comment. Anyone else would like to comment? I hear none. Let's move to close, Jim. Somebody.
So moved.
Do I have a second to close this public hearing?
A couple of seconds.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye, Jim.
Aye, Jacob Morrison.
Aye, Veronica Debonese.
Richard Sample.
Okay. Aye, Nazzy Alcalasi. Okay. So now what's the wishes? Any board member would like to make a wish?
Motion to deny without prejudice.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second Veronica Debonese.
Okay. So we have a motion by Jim, deny without prejudice for 21-20, 1013th Street. And the second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Deny without prejudice.
Aye, Jim Akabachi.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Richard Sample, aye.
And Nazzy Alcalasi, aye. Okay. It's denied without prejudice. Thank you. We'll move to the second one. 22-20, Frederick Mannix.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Fred, Frederick Mannix, Varianz and Seck Land Review, 238 and 240 Sandwich Road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Go ahead, Jim.
This one has been continued to the next meeting of the, of the, of the board, which I'm assuming is gonna be January 6th at this time.
Okay. And they put it in writing and everything else?
Yes.
Okay, very well. So we have a, we have a request in writing from the applicant to continue to Jan, well, it's proposed to be January 6th. We're gonna vote on that at the end of the night. But proposed for January 6th, 2021. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to grant the extension till the 6th.
And hopefully we'll agree to have a meeting on the 6th at the end of the meeting. If not, we'll revisit, we'll reopen. Okay. So do I have a second on that?
I'll second that. Jacob Morrison.
Second by Jake. All in favor to continue until January 6th. If passes by the board at the end of the meeting, say aye.
Jim Akabachi, aye.
Um, I have a question before I vote on this. I'm sorry, but it says it's, it's an extension to January 30th already. So I'm not sure.
Right.
I were extending to the 6th.
The legal performance to January 3rd, but to be heard, January 6th. But the legal part is to January 30.
And is that also gonna be extended by the same amount of time?
We'll, we'll hear on the 6th and we go from there.
The only thing we're extending right now is this meeting.
That's it. Exactly. So, okay, Veronica, you vote.
I'd like to also have an extension. Well, aye.
The January 6th only, okay.
January 6th.
All right. Next, who else?
Richard Sample, aye.
Okay. Nazzy Alcalasi, aye. Okay, very good. So extend it until January 6th. If passes by the board that we meet on the 6th special meeting. Okay, very good. Second, continue public hearing, 26-20, Kevin Nickerson, 3 Oak Hill Road, map 39 lot T5. Okay, public hearing still open. Who, my counsel.
They asked for an extension as well.
Yes.
Are they dead?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
They want to go, they, they request until 113, 2021. I think we need to alter that to 16 and notify them. Or else go out to the end of the January with the extension. With the.
Yeah, Attorney Morton here. I already spoke to Sonia that works for the applicant. If we can do the 6th, that'd be excellent. We're just, we have conservation meeting next week.
Okay, very good.
Give revised plans.
All right. The board, board members, any comment? Okay, board members, any comment?
I do have a comment on the continuances on, on a lot of these hearings. If we're not also getting extensions, I'm concerned that those dates are gonna come. And if something happens and a vote's not made, constructive grants are gonna be given.
Let's see what's the deadline on this one, Nickerson. The deadline is, this one is January 27, 2021. On the 6th, if we don't hear and decide, we'll get an extension until the second meeting. I mean, it continue without an extension. The following meeting on January, let me see, one second. Okay, after the 13 or the 27, the last meeting on January 27. At that 27, if we don't act and we ask the applicant to give us an extension, if he refuses, then we make a decision. But right now, they're within their limits. Okay?
And Veronica, I usually ask for that extension. Always when I'm asking for the hearing, I ask for the decision deadline as well, to extend.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. So we gonna go to, let me, to January 6th, January 6th.
Excuse me for a minute.
What's that, Jimmy?
I, I think I had Attorney Morton make a comment. I don't know if she was saying she'd be making that motion in the future or she expected it to be that way this evening.
They've already been submitted to, both, Sonia has both of those continuances. But if we're gonna have the special meeting, I can change them. I was originally doing the 13th. But the 6th works for both clients as well.
Okay.
The only thing, Counselor, the legal part of it, if that's enough time to put on the paper and advertise, if she can't, we back to the 13, okay?
Okay.
All right. Very well. Anyone on the audience would like to comment on this? Okay, I hear none. The board member, any questions? I hear none. Let's, let's keep going with the, with the vote to continue. Okay.
Most to continue to January 6th by Jim Akabachi.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second, Veronica Debonese.
All in favor, say aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Go ahead, Jake.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Chris Conti, aye. Richard Sample, aye.
And Nazzy, aye. Okay. So it carried to January 6th. Did we say to, I'm sorry to interrupt, 238 Sandwich Road, we extended to January 6th as well, right, Ken?
Correct.
That's correct.
All right, very good. Just let me. All right, very good. Just let me write my notes here, so that's way too many hearings. All right, very well. Thanks, counselor. See you good until January sixth. Hopefully, like I said, we, we'll vote on a, a special meeting on the sixth and hopefully Sonia can do the legal advertising and stuff. Okay, we move forward now to a pub, the new public hearing, twenty-seven dash twenty, G C M A Realty Johnson Salerno, Salerno Variants, one sixty-nine onset Ave. Ken, you wanna read it?
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on December ninth, two thousand twenty, at six thirty P M to consider petition number twenty-seven twenty for variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-eight, under the Wareham zoning bylaws for J C M A Realty LLC, care of John Salerno of one sixty-seven onset avenue, onset, Mass. Proposing to construct a new two-family dwelling at one sixty-nine onset avenue, onset, Mass, assessor's map one, lot B, in the O V one zoning district.
All right, who's presenting this case?
Hi there, Attorney Gillian Morton here for Mr. Salerno with the J C M Realty LLC.
Okay, let's hear it.
Hi, so hopefully you all have the materials. Um, I see that Mr. Conti does. Um, there's a nice um presentation we have there with different tabs on the project, the history of the um property. Um, the Salernos here in town have invested quite a bit um to onset. They have Nanas, they have so the Salerno function room, Mark Anthony's, and obviously the Glen Cove Hotel, which is a huge asset to the neighborhood and tourism alike. So Mr. Salerno is looking to build a two-family on that um vacant piece of land, which, as you know, the history of that lot. Um, if we kind of move from most recent to, to the history backward, was it was a tiki lounge, there was a lot of commotion there, um, a lot going on. And then prior to that, in nineteen ninety-three, if you look through the materials and forgot which tab it was on, um, it was a home that was there for a hundred and ten years. Um, and that property was actually moved to another location on onset Ave, lifted up to thirteen. Um, but besides the point, so that prior build there was um a sixty-one percent F A R. Our denial from Mr. Aquina is for the F A R for that article, um, six twenty-eight of the small lots, which we know in our district, we have that twenty-five percent, which is pretty, you know, all these are undersized lots. So Mr. Salerno has proposed plans that Anthony did that you can look at under the um, the tabs. See, that's where the drawings are. You can see it's um two stories. Um, and the F A R that we're proposing is actually fifty-one percent. Um, so that's what we're seeking a variance on, and um we are seeking um to look at that statutory language and see um that this does meet the threshold for a variance. You know, you as a zoning board are able to make that determination as far as hardship to the petitioner, the topography of the land is this unique. Going through all of that, the uniqueness of the property is there, and the topography, this is the last vacant lot on that bluff, which has the history of having the F A R and that prior build. Um, it's overlooking onset Bay as we know. The actual um applicant did, and assessors, if you look at all the abutting properties, that's often what we want to do, the average F A R over there is fifty-eight percent. And our build, we're looking to do fifty-one. Um, so it's not outside the scope there. Um, the topography of the land being that it's right on onset Ave, and we do have parking in the back. I know that that's gonna be something that's discussed tonight. Um, but it is the, a unique piece of parcel in onset. Um, looking at the hardship, um, even our opposition has already said in their letter that this is a hardship. Um, if he's not able to build this, if you, if we were to strictly look at the zoning, twenty-five percent to build uh, you know, an F A R of twenty-four percent, you can imagine all those houses and something with an, you know, a small one-story, just wouldn't fit right there next to, you know, the hotel, which Mrs. Werno and his team have really revitalized for the town. Um, and it's been a, a great asset there. Prior to him buying it and putting all the, investing all the money, it was sitting there by the bank for, you know, four years. So, um, another thing to be noted is that this was approved by planning board in two thousand fifteen. They knew that he wanted to build this there. Um, and so that's already been done. Now we're, you know, the investment was in the hotel revitalizing that, getting it back up to what we wanted and, and back to the historical um nature of onset, and now he's ready for this bill. Um, so we have this hardship here if we're not able to build the two-family. He is um going to live in one of the units. Um, so it is gonna be owner occupied, which we do know that that makes a, have a pride of ownership. Um, and all the work that we've seen through the Salernos, they have a actual pride in their buildings and revitalizing the onset community there. Um, this desired relief is not gonna be substantial detriment. Um, I know, like we said, there are questions as far as the parking and congestion onset, and this has been talked about, you know, through town meetings, through selectmen, um administrator, they're working on trying to get parking over there. But it's gonna take four spots that are already designated. You can look at the plans. Um, and will create, you know, income for my client and be able to live right next to, you know, his um, his uh hotel, which is just a business owner's dream to be able to be right there in the action. Um, frankly, um, I don't see how this would uh have uh derogate from zoning law. Um, we're looking at a variance, a very classic case, case with this being a lot that um is the one vacancy left on that bluff. Um, so I, you know, encourage you to look through that prior building that was there. You can kind of see what it would have looked like with um even a smaller two-family, and you can see the plans, keeping with that um integrity of the actual onset village and the quaintness of it. Um, we have um letters from the fire department saying that there's no issue there. Um, also, we have the sewer already granted. We have a letter from them. Um, and we have multiple of Butter's letters saying that this is, this is great for the community. I know that there are some, some opposition. We're happy to answer questions regarding that. But I think to deny this would um, would, would not make sense because it does hit all those points within the statutory relations for a variance. So we're happy to answer any questions. Mrs. Werno's here to, um, to be able to talk more about history or anything that you have questions on. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let me ask you a question before we go. So you asking a variance for the uh, the F A R, the floor average, right? It, it, this is a buildable lot by right, by right, that have the footage and frontage?
Yes.
It does. Okay, what lot is it? Is it lot B?
Yes.
Are you looking at the plan?
Map one lot B.
It's okay. Uh, Mr. Aquina, are you, are you still there or you left?
Oh, yeah, Nazir.
Are you here? Okay, and, and what's the zoning there on O V one for, for a buildable lot?
Uh, five thousand square feet.
And what's the frontage?
Uh, that's O V one. Give me one second, Mr. Chairman.
Do I understand correctly, the only thing we need here is a variance on the F A R?
That's right.
That's what they said. I just want to confirm the, the, the lot is buildable first. Apparently it is, but this, let's hear it from the commissioner.
Five thousand square feet, fifty feet of frontage, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and do we have a survey for this plan? What's the frontage on this lot? I see here you have, I can't really read it on that little plan. But it says fifty-two twenty, the square footage. Do you have a survey plan for the frontage?
There's a site plan in there.
Site plan and, and we, that is online too, so I don't know if it would be helpful, Ken, to pull that up and then maybe zoom in on it. If it's too small in the submission. Ken, did you hear me?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Okay, I see the site plan. You have ten feet point six and forty point oh one, so you have fifty point six, why you just made it, I believe. I think so, right? That's what it looks like. You wanna put those, that plan up?
The commissioner's denial would have dealt with that if they didn't have the frontage, wouldn't it, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we're going right off of Mr. Aquina's letter just about the F A R.
Um.
All right, I, I'm looking at the site plan drafted by Mr. Madden G F. He had, and they do have the, the footage, the frontage. It's ten point six plus forty point zero one, so it's fifty point six. They save there. The only question, what's a two-unit allowed there? How many square feet you need for two, you know, don't you need an additional thousand under five thousand?
Uh, no, two-family together um require five thousand square feet. There is no up um increase or an additional unit there.
All right, very well. So this, so this matters, so, so the only thing we hear then for F A R. All right, so so floor average ratio, right? That's what it is, right?
You're seeking one.
Floor area ratio. All right, so you are allowed by right apparently is fifteen hundred square feet and you want, uh, how much you want, twenty-seven forty-four?
Yes, so it's only a twenty-five percent coverage, um, which we know those lots in, in um in onset, rarely any of those have that.
Okay, now, I, I have to ask the question, was, was the real, can you like any rate on the, on the hardships so the board member can understand the hardship? I mean, this is your biggest challenge, the hardship.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if he's denied this, he's not, you know, he's building this to live in it. Um, this lot has been sitting now, and then we, we already saw with the tiki bar, that's not, you know, as far as a developer goes, that that was not really a great use for the land. Two-family here right on the bluff where most of those are all two-family. Um, it just creates a um perfect thing for him to be able to live there, and it would be a hardship to him if he is not able to, to build on that lot and create that.
You're saying it'll be financial hardship?
That's right.
Right, now, but the hardship doesn't specify financial, it has to be topo, shape, soil.
Well, that's the uniqueness, right? So that's the topography part. Yes.
Nazir?
Yes, go ahead, Jim. Um, one second, Jimmy. Uh, counselor, are you done before Jim speaks?
Yes.
All right, Jim, go ahead.
I'm gonna say, it might be crude, my wording, but I'm gonna make my comment. I think the hardship is that they were using the land, they were using it as a swimming pool at one point, they used it as a tiki, but they had all kinds of different ways of using it, and the neighborhood yelled and screamed and said, no, 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 we don't want it. We want you to do, this is a, this is a nice neighborhood now. It's not a, we don't want that. So the hardship would be denying him to do what the neighbors want, have asked him to do.
Okay, so you're saying you're in favor?
You, you own a piece of property, you don't own, you don't invest in real estate just because you, you know, you like to look at it and pay taxes on it.
Okay, so, and so what are you saying, Jim, you in favor of that value?
I'm in favor of, of granting, and I, and I think the hardship is that the neighborhood has denied him the right to do anything else with the property. They've objected to everything else that that property's ever attempted to do. They, they said this is Ocean Avenue and it's, it's, it's become residential, and we want this to be a residential area. So, be careful what you wish for.
All right, and just for the record, Mr. Conti will be voting on this for Mr. Walter C. All right, Veronica, what's your comment on this before we have to hear from the board?
Um, Mrs. Morton already commented on what my concerns are, and that has to do with parking. Um, I don't think that's something that I can overlook, especially because the F A R is uh, they're looking to increase it beyond what's allowed. I think there needs to be parking on that lot for that property.
Yes. Okay.
So, um, perhaps.
Counselor.
Yeah, about that, um, because he was the one, you know, this does tie in with the hotel, right? Because obviously the parking lot is adjacent to that. So Mr. Lerno, if you want to talk about where those parking spots will be and.
Yes.
Um, yeah.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I'm John Salerno. Um, I bought the property in two thousand and twelve um with the intention of putting a building up there, because I knew it was a buildable lot when I bought the property, because I had done the research on it. Um, and doing what we were gonna do with the hotel, we didn't know what we were gonna do. We finally decided that we were gonna install the five-star elevator, put a sprinkler system in the building where there never was one, uh, fire protection, update all the electric, all the plumbing, and, and we spent a lot of money. In two thousand and fifteen, I went before the uh planning board for a site plan review. Um, and we talked about these issues in regard to parking. Um, I have fourteen hotel rooms. I have the two units. Um, I need a parking spot for each room, which I have, and that allows me five more parking spots, one is, which is a handicap, and four more just for the unit if I wanted to. I think I only need one, but I, I have two if I need to. Um, I'll be honest with you. Um, what happened was we were gonna put the building up in two thousand and sixteen, but with the, I, I'm sure you know with the cost of this renovation, putting a five-star elevator in a front of a hundred and thirty-year-old building, and not just slapping it in there, but making it look aesthetically pleasing and trying to protect the bluff and create an image that is known to onset. Um, I think we accomplished that. Uh, but what, by doing that, though, it, it, it helped me up financially, uh, because it was also hard to put the other building up. Two thousand and eighteen, the F A R changed. I'll be honest, in retrospect, I wish I had the money to put it up back then. But fast forward, I do have parking for that. My plan, when I first bought the property, was to make the entire parking lot private to the property. Um, you know, given the condos up the street have the same idea. I mean, I, I don't have parking for everybody. Um, I do have parking for my residents. If the hotel's full and the units are full and I'm in there, I mean, there's enough parking for us, and now the parking lot becomes private when you enter it. Not, not, not for the general public. Um, so in essence, it really helps me to have the the units in and make all the parking for all the property. Um, and that's what I intended to do, and uh, and that's what I want to do.
All right, very good, Mr. Salerno.
I mean, many, I, I'd answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Salerno. So we're gonna go to Mr. Conti. Your comments, Mr. Conti.
Um, so, so the property line, it looks like part of that parking lot is part of this piece of property, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it already does have the parking there. I, I, I um, I think they're all small lots in that area, and I really don't uh have a problem with this uh proposal. I think Anthony did a great job on the building. I love the look of the building, and um, I think it'll look nicer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Sample, you wanna comment?
Yes, I'd like, yes, I would. Um, I agree, the packet that's put together is a quite an attractive packet, and it makes it easy to go through. Secondly, the parking issue, I think we just went through this with the center of town and the brewery that was going in. And they didn't have much for parking, and they were supposed to be down in the center of town, that's the public parking. And I believe there's some of that in onset. And all the other houses that are around there, their F A R, as Miss Morton stated, are all above what he is asking. So I am in full agreement, and uh, I would approve this.
All right, Jake?
Um, I have no questions at the time. I'd just like to hear, obviously hear from the public, see what they have to say at some point.
All right, okay, very well. We're gonna go to the public. Uh, I see Mr. Perry's here representing a neighbor on behalf uh the Bridge Marina. And then we have a letter here from Tom McManus. Is Mr. McManus here? Okay, Mr. McManus is not here, but he has a letter. I'm gonna read it quick. I understand that this is proposed two-family house in onset Ave. This property is adjac- adjacent to the Glen Cove Hotel. A two-family house gets four parking spaces per zoning. Where are these four parkings going to be? All the available parking has already been allocated to the hotel, which still is insufficient for its use and design. So this letter read for the public, and that's from Tom McManus, East Boulevard, onset. And uh, I see, is Mr. Counselor Perry here, Bob Perry?
Yes, can you hear me, Nazir?
Yes, yes. Okay, I see you're big, maybe we're better to hear it from you.
Well, I just assumed you hear it from me, because first of all, uh, I know you said they had an F A R fifteen hundred square feet. You may have gotten it from my letter. I, I put the wrong number in there. It's twelve fifty. They can do as a matter of right.
Okay.
If our zoning bylaw is gonna have any, any meaning whatsoever, I would suggest that this board would have no right whatsoever to give a variance on F A R. As all of you know, you can only grant a variance if there's something dealing with topography, and topography is not what was defined as my system. I think all of you know what topography is. Soil conditions or shape of a lot. There's none of those, even if they existed, that could have any effect whatsoever on F A R. The F A R is, we've set it down in our zoning bylaws, is very simple. You got a small lot. It's buildable. It's buildable up to a twelve hundred, well, no, twelve hundred and fifty, twelve hundred and fifty square foot house, that's it. And You know, the town passed that bylaw, that bylaw has to be accepted. F A R has only to do with the square foot of the house, has nothing to do with anything else on the lot. So I would suggest that although I would concede there's a hardship, if you can only build a twelve hundred and fifty square foot house. It's a nice little single family house. It's what our zoning bylaw foresees being built. The fact that other houses there have an F A R. That is grandfathered, that's greater than twenty five percent. Is not relevant. The fact that there was a big house there at one time and they moved it away. Irrelevant. None of that has anything to do with this. There's only one thing you have to consider. And that's the F A R exceeds the amount that's permitted by the bylaw. Without any of the elements of section ten of chapter forty being applicable. To grant the granting of a variance and you just. You just can't do it. Now, I am also concerned with the whole parking issue, just as Mr. McManus was. Uh I don't. And I'm concerned, not not so much because of the four parking spaces you have to have to build the house. I'm concerned because onset is a summer neighborhood. Vacation neighborhood, you're gonna have people coming down to visit. You don't have any idea who would be in the rental. You don't have any idea how many guests they're gonna have. You don't have any idea what they're gonna attempt to do about parking. I think the potential detriment to the parking and the traffic situation in onset. Is very much a derogation from the intent of the bylaw. The intent of the bylaws is very, very clear. The town spelled out the intent very simply in the first article in the bylaws. And a lot of it has to do with congestion in the streets. A lot of it has to do with getting fire trucks, the police cars, which you can't do, it's more difficult if somebody parks improperly. So I'm just suggesting that this application, even though it poses a hardship for the applicant, I can appreciate that because I usually represent applicants. It's just not an allowable petition if nothing else based on the fact, the specific findings. That you have to make in order to grant a variance. Absolutely cannot be made because the statute has no relevance whatsoever to this, except that you have to comply with that statute. The statute doesn't foresee F A R issues. So I'm usually to deny this petition.
Okay. For the record, you you're on behalf of uh Stone Bridge.
Stonebridge Marina LLC.
All right, very well. And they direct a water or across the street? Something like that. Yeah, okay.
The marine are in the rest.
All right, counselor, uh you wanna answer to this, counselor?
Attorney Morton. Yes, um I would, I would like to comment specifically on the idea that we can't get a variance um on an F A R. Um you've done that before, so I I frankly disagree um with Attorney Perry on that fact of um. That you can't get a variance from F A R. That would preclude us be able to have, you know, a right to appeal this denial letter from. The commissioner. So as far as that goes, and when we actually look at the statute, soil, topography, the land, I talked about that. That is the bluff. It's right on the coastline there. Um so the lot is relevant to the variance. So. In my opinion, that's that's not relevant to what we're talking about. F A R can be voted by you all to have a variance. You've done it before. Um I can, I understand his concern with his client being in a butter and there are, you know, parking issues over there. But they've gotten creative. They've been able to rent spaces from Conway on the Bay. Um you know, we're working as best we can. I think the town's doing the best. Um in the situation, um to deny the applicant absolutely already Attorney Perry said it, it would be a huge hardship. The intent of the bylaws is not to preclude someone. A property owner from building on something that they've been approved through the planning board, through site plan review, which is an absolute more stringent process in two thousand and fifteen. He had some financial issues um because of the con because of the uh Glen Cove Hotel and all the things he put into it. Now we're just seeking this, um you know, in two thousand and twenty, there was a change to the bylaw. So in my opinion. I understand his concerns of parking, but um I I don't agree with the uh the fact that you can't uh have a variance on F A R.
All right, let me, let me say, just let me speak my mind. Uh ju- just for the record, if we have approved approved an F A R. On a different law, it's a different law and we all know each law has its own merit, so we are that. I'd I'd rather not say, oh, you give it here and you gave it there. We all know that each law has its own. Statue or its own merit, its own everything. So we cannot say. We did here and did that, but I just for the however, if every, if Attorney Perry can hear me out. The this gentleman of the company. What's the company name?
Stonebridge Marina LLC.
Okay, no, no, the the owner. Okay, that the Realty Group that's doing the two units, they own the hotel, right? Next door, right?
Yes.
Right, and they and they and the hotel is the square footage as well. Way above the zoning alone. I mean, as I understand from the commissioner, it's five thousand square feet and I see on the plan. That that the that the hotel has well over fifteen thousand. I mean, if 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 the owner go out, go to the planning board. And add twenty five hundred square feet to the slot, which he can. Then he's comply in compliance. It's not like he can't do it. So I believe if we give a. If we give a variance personally on the F A R, we're not doing such dramatic thing. Because the gentleman, the owner. Like I said, he can easily go to planning board and move the property line and add twenty five hundred square feet and it doesn't affect nothing. It's all in paper. I mean, uh correct me if I'm wrong.
I'll correct you if you're wrong, Nazzy.
Go ahead, Mr. Perry.
First of all, if if you allowed variances on F A R before.
And like I said, it's irrelevant.
Secondly, if you had twenty five hundred square feet to that lot. You get from a twelve hundred and fifty square foot F A R to a fifteen hundred square foot.
All right, Mr. Perry, let let me, let me reiterate, just like I said, that told that anymore. What I don't wanna combine our decision on different law. Each one has its own merit. I don't wanna say, you know, you're doing the same thing she did.
No, I don't want to either. I agree with you.
I think.
But okay, let me, let me finish what I'm saying. Okay, never mind twenty five hundred square feet. The guy's got fifteen thousand next door. Say he moved the property line fi- another five thousand square feet, then he complied. I mean, are we really gonna penalize this gentleman? Just to have a line moved on a paper? He could easily make his lot ten thousand square feet. And he still comply with the zoning and fifteen thousand, he he dropped it down to ten thousand and still comply. So.
And he's up to two thousand square feet, Nazzy. You're gonna, you're gonna enlarge your lot a little more?
All right, then give seventy five hundred square feet and he still comply, my my my, what I'm trying to say, Mr. Perry, he still comply. In both slots, he's got ten thousand square feet to play with the other lot. So he could give half of that parking lot, then the F F F A R complies. If he deeds, go to planning board, cut half of this, eh the parking lot and deed it to this one, then he's in compliance. I mean, do you, you don't agree?
Well, if he follows your example, now he gets a twenty one twenty five F A R.
Okay. All right, I don't have a calculator with me to figure out the numbers.
If he did what you want him to do. And came back to this board, maybe I wouldn't have any objection because maybe he could do it in some fashion that would make it legal. Right now, it's illegal. It's all there is to it. You've got a five thousand two hundred and fifty square foot lot. Can't comply with the F A R requirements of Article six, never gonna comply with the F A R. Articles of Article six, never can you make the specific findings required by the law that would stand up in the courts. And then if he wants to go back and large the lot somehow. Maybe he can do it. I I don't know, but that's not before you today.
I totally understand. Of course he could do it, but we are here. I mean, I mean, we are here to help our residents and we are here for good of the town. And we have five board members, Mr. Perry, that agree to this. The the fact that I I totally understand if we saying, well, this law is not buildable at all, we're gonna make it buildable. And this I do, then I understand your argument, but this law is buildable regardless. So in us.
It is. I don't disagree. He can build a twelve hundred and fifty square foot house.
Right, but for, like I said. For us to penalize penalize the gentleman, just because because he has the slot, which is is easily can. Like I said, move the property line and comply. I don't think it's fair for the gentleman, for the company.
Well, then perhaps when the bylaw were written, the bylaw should have been written differently. As you're well aware, Nazzy. In section ten, the town could have written something into the bylaw that would have allowed you to make certain findings. Different than the general findings dealing with topography. Soil conditions in shape of the lot. The town did not do that. Why? I don't know. All I can do is deal with the bylaw as the town wrote it, and I think you have to do the same thing with all due respect.
Uh counselor, I totally agree with the bylaw says and I I I and we still have a board that has is empowered to do. Grant a variance if they feel it's fair. So and then again, that's my opinion. I I wanna pass it again by the board before I pass it again by the board member for more comments. Anyone else in the audience wanna speak on this matter in favor or against? All right, here and none. I wanna go back to the board. We start by Veronica after Mr. Perry's comment. So what do you think, Veronica?
Um after listening to everything that was said, um I think it's just been emphasized more by um. The some of the people that are in opposition tonight regarding the parking. I think. Um I do wanna say the Salernos have done a great job in onset in terms of real estate and businesses and jobs they've created. Um but that doesn't mean that I can overlook the fact that this area um definitely has parking issues. Personally, I had my boat at Stone Bridge Marina and I could have one car at that marina and I had to drive across the bridge to find parking. If anybody else came to come on my boat. Um that's because parking was so tight in that area. And that was before the hotel was active with the restaurant. So it's only gotten worse. And in in terms of the F A R, in times that we allow it and we don't allow it. When there are times that we allow it, we take several things into consideration and that would be um surrounding factors. Um there was a mention about the brewery. One of the board members mentioned the brewery and how we allowed it there, you know, regardless of the parking, but. Wayham Center and this area are completely different in terms of parking. Stone Bridge Marina has. A a driver driving people around trying to find parking for them to go there and eat. I mean, this is something that's gonna prevent people from going to businesses. If they have to drive around to try and find some parking to go and. Um you know, dine or, you know, visit the establishments. I think this property needs to have parking and I I understand that, you know, part of the property already has um. A piece of this law is used for the hotel, but that doesn't mean it doesn't need more parking. Uh it does, especially where you wanna have two families. Um I I don't think that can be overlooked and it's true about the hardship, but um. I think if that issue were addressed, there wouldn't be opposition.
All right, but with all due respect, parking is not before us and we don't have a, we they're not here for a balance for parking.
But however, it does affect this lot.
But that's not what they're here for, with all due respect. That 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 the commissioner did not mention the need of variance for the parking. They're here for various for F A R. And then again, that if I may, let's not go into other projects or other. Where we approved that did not approve. Let's stick with this project and let's concentrate, but please listen exactly to what I. Said about the lot line, this gentleman on next door and he's got plenty of room to play with. But if this is your opinion, this is your opinion. But just for the record, before we go forward, Mr. Sample's gonna be sitting on this matter because. Mr. Conti just said on the other, so he'll be voted for Mr. Walter Cruz. All right, Veronica, your message. Okay, but we'll get back to you. Let's go. We it's getting late and let's hear it from other people. Okay, we go to Mr. Morrison. You after hearing Mr. Perry, what do you like to say?
I have nothing to say at this time.
Jimmy.
Um. I've been listening and I'm. It's all the thing that I see on the screen that shared all that black is the parking.
Right.
Who owns the parking? Which which parcel owns it? The 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 hotel or the parcel it's being built on?
It's all one.
It's not, it's not one, Mark.
I'm sorry, it's John.
John, sorry, John, but that's a separate lot, right?
Yes.
That's a separate lot, but he owns it.
So one lot has parking, one lot has a proposed two family house and the third lot. Has a renovated hotel. Am I getting it right now?
There's only two lots.
Okay, so the hotel owns the parking?
Yes, and the intention was before the site plan review was that. I have nineteen parking spots, fourteen hotel rooms, so the hotel would get fifteen parking spots and the the units would get four. I have. If 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 I could, my architect would like to talk. I I have parking and I was approved for all this at two thousand and fifteen. Before the town, I went for, you know, I went for uh. The uh my intention to put the units up and I I I seeked approval and I was granted approval by the planning board in two thousand and fifteen and we talked all about the parking and they. They approved it.
All right, before we go, we listen to Anthony. Is is it possible, John, to give. An easement for four parking spaces to to the to the two units from the other land? Can you give an easement? So it goes with the land always?
Yes.
Okay, so it's fine. So, okay, so we heard from Jim, you're good?
You could see where I was going. I was gonna combine the lots, create enough square footage to get what he wants. And then lease the lot, the parking back of the hotel, but it's just legal stuff.
Exactly. That's what I was trying to say originally with the lines, you know, I mean, he's he has it. It's a matter of moving on paper, put it on paper. Anyway, so message, message well taken. So let's go to Mr. Sample.
We're gonna still, if we're gonna still talk about the parking, I'm a little confused on. Uh the Stone Bridge has a marina and it has parking. The Stone Bridge also has a cafe. There there's an awful lot going on in that lot. So I think that the uh. Parking situation is the same for everybody there and I think they've been dealing with it. And it is a little tough when I go down there to try and park, but it's something you do because you enjoy the area.
I agree. I agree very well.
May I speak? John Cornish?
One second. Let let me go to Mr. Conti, then we. Mr. Conti, what's your comment?
Um I I I thought those uh from the looks of the uh the plot um site plan right there, I thought those. Those um parking spaces were part of that.
The Mr. Mr. Ron, uh yeah, okay, good, mute it. Go ahead, go ahead.
So on that site plan, you see where it says those existing stairs to be removed by others? Is is that on this property or no? On the lower part of this the site plan? That's not on the property?
The stairs are on the property. The note is not on the property.
So but Anthony, you are removing those stairs, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The the steps themselves and to the left of the steps is the property line. Site plan, if you'd like to see it, it's a little uh brighter than this one.
So so that black spot on the uh looks like, I thought that was parking there.
May I share my screen?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh just a second.
Anthony, before I go to you, I wanna listen to a gentleman named John. Mr. John, you you want to say something?
Of course.
Yeah, John Cornish, I'm the butter. Yes. I just, I I just wish that um this property could be held to the same standard that I've been held to. Um which is, which is parking was an was absolutely a huge conversation with the Z B A, with the planning board. With everyone when I've done any changes. It it every time I do anything, it it comes up and is discussed. And there's been, I don't know how many seats they have in that restaurant. Um but there's been no effort whatsoever to help relieve the parking. Uh problem that the restaurant causes, the new restaurant, the Salerno Zone. Um and before I was able to even add my deck on the back, which didn't change anything gra- greatly. I had to prove that I had existing parking. I had to rent, uh get a lease from the Conway property. and I actually had to build my deck so that I could park ten cars underneath the deck. So I so I met all the different requirements. I also was forced to have three handicap parking spaces before any of this, any of my work could be approved. And, uh, I've watched that lot and wondered why the heck that hasn't been added uh, as parking to relieve the parking in the area that the restaurant has certainly added since it was open, and it was closed for a long, long time. So and I know this isn't about parking per se, but it certainly is, uh, very, very, very crucial to any business doing anything down there that they have places to put their customers. So fourteen places, fourteen parking spaces are reserved just for hotel spaces, hotel rooms. That means nothing for staff, leaves nothing for restaurant, people that visit the restaurant. And it certainly doesn't have four more spaces after he builds that building. So I would just hope that he would reduce his plan, build a nice one-family, small home, and enjoy it there and help help me relieve parking instead of adding to more of the problems.
All right, okay, and you are, Mr. John, you the owner of the marina?
I own Stonebridge Marina LLC.
All right, okay.
The whole property, it's the restaurant, it's the apartment and the, uh, marina, yes.
My my question, if I may, excuse, one second, Mr. Perry. My question is, if he built a smaller home or a bigger home, you you think it'll affect the parking? Mr. John?
Everything that, uh, they've done has affected parking, and this would just affect it more. That's now the with a two, uh, two-family home, that's four more parking spaces. And I don't see where the parking spaces can can be on the plan except for in spaces that they're already trying to utilize with a very, I don't, I don't, you can ask John how many seats are in that restaurant, but fourteen rooms, uh, and then a restaurant and staff, restaurant, you know, customers and staff. It will, it will certainly, everything affects parking down there. We're so tight that any change makes a drastic problem, which I have addressed myself. I've rented spaces, I've rented for crazy money, uh, space just to park cars, and we have to have someone out there parking those cars because the Salernos' customers are always trying to take our spaces. And that's again, we're way off topic, but it really is pertinent.
All right. Okay, Mr. Perry, back to you. What do you mean saying?
Yeah, I just, just while you guys were talking, since Jim took the same position, you've let him enlarge the lot, and and I have no problem with that. But you need a lot, lot B would have to be sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy-six feet to do what they want to do under the bylaw. So that's a pretty, pretty big enlargement. So once again, you should deny this petition. Let him go back and do that if he can. I don't think he can because I think it affects his other business. But maybe he will be back before you want a variance for the restaurant or the hotel or whatever.
All right, I want to move to Anthony, Mrs. Frangiatis. Mrs. Frangiatis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm Anthony Frangiatis. I'm the architect who has been working with the Salernos on this, um, master plan, if you will, uh, since they purchased the property. And I'd like to make a few comments regarding the floor area ratio and how it relates to onset village and the character. While I recognize that it's part of the bylaw and a regulation, it is a bylaw and it exists on paper. And one of the things that we worked very hard to do is maintain the architectural character of onset village and honor the significance of the property. Um, we're, you know, we're direct, we have a direct abutter, a building that's abutting us that's probably, um, an architectural icon, I would say, in the town of Wareham. Um, there are very few buildings of its stature, and it holds a lot of presence. Um, our improvements to it over the past few years have been an attempt to honor that presence and to make it as magnificent as possible. So while we recognize parking is tight, nothing we do on this property is going to improve parking. We're in a village, we want active buildings, we do not want abandoned buildings, we do not want parking lots. We certainly don't want parking lots on the waterfront. Um, one sixty-nine onset Avenue is that missing gap, and it is a vacant lot, um, which we've worked very hard to design a building that would hold its own without being four stories tall, um, like its neighbor, um, and be in keeping with the two-story building on the other side. It's thirty-two feet wide, it's well under the, um, building height limit. It's to its ridge, it's thirty-two feet. And what I would like the board to, um, consider while you're thinking about all of these different things is that there's architectural character and uniqueness to onset village that we need to preserve um, without building a dwarfed building next to a very large significantly or an architecturally significant building. And I do have elevations that I can share as well if anybody's interested in seeing those.
All right. Uh, yeah, we have the plan. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want, we didn't ask anyone else in the audience want to speak in this matter in favor or against? Okay, I hear none. Okay, board member, what's your wishes? What do you want to do? You want to close, you want to continue, what do you like to do?
Hello.
Yes?
Do you have a butters on?
One sec, one sec. Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yes, we would like to, uh, say something.
Yeah, your name for the record and address, ma'am?
Yes, Rhonda Fitterman and Walt Fitterman, sixteen A Ocean Avenue.
Yes.
Right behind the hotel.
Okay. What do you like to say?
All right, several things. I I disagree that the applicant for the, uh, request for the building size, if you will, did not include or require, uh, a variance for the parking. In nineteen, in two thousand twelve thirteen, when this was approved for, uh, Mr. Salerno to to modify the building, which granted, he did a nice job with. Um, he had, he got approvals, he got the variance for his parking, which included the lot that he wants to build on now. So we get the count, I understand, today for that parking lot today is seventeen spaces. And that was granted in nineteen, in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, with that lot in place being vacant. Now he wants to build something on that lot and four spaces, and that seventeen spaces now becomes thirteen spaces. The issue is the restaurant and the lounge and the hotel have have an occupancy and are stated the following, one hundred for the bayroom, eighty for the lounge, fourteen for the hotel. That's a hundred and ninety-four, uh, potential people to be there. I believe the town's, uh, allowance for parking is five patrons per car, and that would therefore break down to fifty cars. There's only seventeen spaces minus the potentially four spaces he wants to use for the new house, and that's thirteen. The problem is, Mr., uh, the the attorney for Mr. Salerno is saying this application would be a hardship for him if he doesn't build. The problem that you're not stating, and this is a hardship for the homeowners behind him if he does build because there's no pay, there's no spaces to park, and they're parking in front of our house in our driveways all over where they shouldn't be. The issue is, again, it's not that Mr. Salerno did not do a great job fixing it up, maintaining it. Um, we're we're patrons of his restaurants, but there's, the issue is, is parking. It's been stated before, and there should have been a variance included in the application for his parking because we know he wouldn't get it for parking if it was included, and it was therefore purposely omitted from the application for that reason.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mrs. Slavin, you want to say something on that? Any any comment, Mrs. Slavin? Okay, I don't hear anything from him.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Want to repeat it?
Do you want to do any, make any comment on that?
I didn't hear what you asked me for.
I said, do you have any comment on this project? Any comment on this project?
Uh, no, I mean, we all know the issue in the area there, and actually all of onset villages, there's a lack of parking because it's a village in which you have, uh, houses and stuff from five thousand square foot lots, and most people have taken their driveways or whatever they had for their horse carriage originally and converted it to land, and everybody parks out on the street. So no matter what you do, parking is going to be an issue. Uh, people have to use, uh, when John's been forced to use basically, both Johns really, uh, using the parking down at, uh, Lopes Field and across the way at Heinz Field and actually bring people back and forth. We even as a town have tried to use a shuttle service to help them out. There's just no parking in the area. You have homes, you know, along the road on the side there, and there's nothing there. So I don't know what you, I don't know how you're going to fix the issue because every business that you have either expands or dies basically. And the bottom line to this is, you're not going to fix the parking. The only way you can fix the parking is if you wanted to raise the building up, put parking under the building, which would bring it up another whole story or more. And there is no easy solution to this. I've been dealing, you know, with with, uh, both Mr. Cornish and, uh, John from Salerno's for probably, I'd say, four or five years on the parking issue, trying to come up with some solution, which we haven't been able to do. So that's my only real comment.
And I totally agree. I mean, really and truly, any establishment in onset, not one of them has the the what they're supposed to have to for parking. It is what it is, that's how onset is. I mean, and if you move there, you know what you're up to, and it is what it is.
But but sir, if I may say, it's not so much what, um, what's there. It's the issue he wants to add to it. In other words, take away parking. That's the issue. If 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 it was left alone, we have, we have no, because it was already done, we can't say anything. But because you want to take away more spaces from that, from that facility, I I mean, add more, uh, add more building to it, which means take away more spaces, that's what the conflict is. That's the issue.
Right, but if I if I may, we're not creating a lot. The lot exists and it's buildable. And we're just making it, we're making the house bigger, but it's it's allowed. We're not creating, I would I would be totally against creating a lot. Or if that lot wasn't buildable, that's why I'm here on the frontage and footage. This lot is
because you're not
you gotta, excuse me, we we gotta hear me. You you understand what I'm trying to say? We're not creating a lot. The lot exists. So and that's why beginning, I made sure the frontage and the footage is right. It's all a matter of the bigger, uh, floor area. That's all what the matter, so regardless, he could put two houses at twelve fifty square feet on the floor, a floor area. So we're not creating any hard, any any prob, we're not creating a how, a lot. Do you understand, sir?
I I do, but what what you are creating is the the lot was vacant when he bought this. Okay, regardless of what his intended plans were, it's vacant. He got the variance for seventeen spaces when he bought it. You're asking the town, you're asking the neighbors to accept the fact that he now wants to theoretically add something else, whether it's a house, a hotel, or or a bigger kitchen. He's adding more space to the property he's already knew when he bought. There was a limitation of parking, and you're asking us to accept the fact that there'll be four less parking spaces on that property because of his will, his his wish and desire to add more its building to it when we're saying you don't have enough parking for what's there as it is. So why should he have the right to build more when he doesn't have enough parking what's there? And that's the point.
He has the right to build regardless.
I disagree, not if he needed a variance for
No, you 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 you're not listening carefully. Regardless, he has the right to build. Then that were we here tonight for on the floor area ratio? We're not here to argue if he can build a house or not. Regardless, the law is buildable. So we're not going to go there and argue this. We're not adding a lot, so we're not going to argue this no more. So let's stick with the floor area. I want to move to, move to other neighbors.
Can I
unless you want to specify something about floor area, sir? You know, you you wait, go.
The town attorney, has your town attorney reviewed the applicant? And has he agreed that parking issue does not come into play on this applicant?
No, parking issue is, it doesn't come into play.
Okay.
Parking issue does come into play because the bylaw speaks to traffic and congestion in the streets and interference with emergency vehicles.
Counselor, I totally disagree, counselor. I disagree, totally disagree. Say this, say this lot be belong to Josh Moore, forget him, the neighbor. He could go out today and build a two, a a house on a, on a two-unit by right.
He'd need four car lots.
Twelve hundred fifty square feet.
Long as it's fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay, so so what we're here to argue, there you go, that's your answer. We're here to argue the floor area, forget the parking.
Well, just we're here to argue the board's duty to comply with section ten of chapter forty-eight.
All right. I'm I'm I'm, okay, I'm I'm only going to argue floor area, I'm not going to discuss parking lot. So I mean, whatever you'd like to add, I mean, and then again, we have the commissioner letter, it's
Well, then can we ask for zero floor area?
Excuse me, sir?
Then let's ask for a zero floor area. Why give a floor area?
Yes, you can't ask for zero here. The 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 lot is a buildable lot, you can't ask for zero floor.
And and access to that lot is through the parking lot, is that correct? Is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not gonna, I then again, I'm not going to discuss, personally, I'm not going to discuss parking. Maybe other board member can answer this. Who would like to answer this issue, this question?
I would like to make
And let Jim speak, Veronica, I'll get back to you, Mr. Jim.
Um, I'm wondering if it may not be prudent to continue this hearing and allow Mr. Salerno to go back and consider whether he wants to build a two-family or a one-family. If he was in front of us for a one-family, um, it would make the, um, argument moot.
But Jim, with all due respect, he's allowed by right to do two-family. You just heard from the commissioner.
I'm not saying, but I'm asking if we want to continue and give Mr. Salerno a chance to think about it.
We we will, yes. Excuse me, if I may, we will, we will def certainly entertain a motion to continue. However, keep in mind, he's got the right to do two units. We we're only gonna, maybe he could consider shrink it, but that's his thing. Or he could wait for a vote. So I have no problem continuing personally.
I'm sorry, may I ask you a question, sir? If according to the, I I'm, my name is Teresa. According to your bylaws
Ma'am, ma'am, hold on, we have a process, excuse me, ma'am. I need your name, full name, and address for the record. We have to follow a process here, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Teresa Cappuccioni, sixteen Ocean Ave.
Yes.
You keep saying he has a right to build the two-family, but according to the bylaw and according to the to the square footage, he does not have that right. As it, as it, he needs a variance, so he doesn't have the right. Can you explain that? Explain that to me.
He has the right to build a two-family, a twelve hundred fifty square feet.
Twelve hundred fifty square feet.
Right. Exactly, by right. So if he do a twelve fifty and the second floor twelve fifty, he doesn't have to be here. He go to the commissioner, get a building permit and build it tomorrow. What he's here tonight to make the twelve fifty, I don't know, twenty-seven hundred square feet. He's enlarging the floor area. So he's got a right to build regardless. He wouldn't be here if he sticks with the twelve fifty.
I'm not disputing his right to build, but but I'm, what I'm asking is, you keep saying he has the right to build, but he doesn't have the right to build to the square footage that he's requesting. He needs your permission to do that. Okay, I just needed to, I need to clarify what you were saying. Um, secondly, um, I mean, I I live directly behind the hotel. I'm all for wonderful, successful businesses in the neighborhood. It's a wonderful thing. Um, the frustration that you are expressing over those of us that are talking about parking, I want you to multiply that by ten thousand because those of us who live here and can't get into our driveways at the end of a a long day of work on a Friday night because of the lack of parking, and they're parking in our driveways, they're parking on our property, they're parking kitty corner on telephone poles. We've had to call police, we've had to call tow trucks, we've had to call the hotel to simply get into our own driveway. So our fear is that if you allow the two-family, and then again, you've got four more parking spaces, you've got visitors, you've got family, you've got gatherings. What is going to happen? What is going to happen? How many times am I gonna have to drive home and not be able to get into my own property? Because now you've got four more part, i- it's just, I understand all of it, but please understand our frustration too.
I totally understand, ma'am, I totally understand, but you keep going around the, the, you, you're not, you keep around, going around the same subject, you keep saying if we allow him to build.
No, if you allow him to build a two-family with the square footage, if you allow him to build a two-family. So he could build a two-family, six hundred and fifty square feet per.
No, not six fifty, he could allow, build two-family, twenty-five hundred, twelve fifty each floor.
I don't think you're right there, Nazzy.
Okay, I don't think you're right either, sir. Um, and if that's the case, and if you're.
Listen to me, five thousand square feet, what's twenty-five percent of five thousand? What's?
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty, there you go, you could do twelve fifty each floor.
No. Each twelve.
No.
Total.
No, floor area, ma'am, not, it, it, just the floor ratio.
Twelve fifty, it's that simple.
What's the, if I may ask, what's the cover ratio for that lot?
That's what he's talking about.
Twenty-five percent.
Well, that then, then.
No, no.
Twenty-five percent is the cover ratio, that means twenty-five percent of five thousand square feet is twelve fifty. That's the area you could cover on the lot. Where does it say you can double the cu- the coverage area? That's what you're doing if you build twelve fifty and twelve fifty, you're doubling it. Where does it say that?
No.
No, what do you mean?
Mr. Aquina, hold on, let's ask the professional, Mr. Aquina, you still there?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is, what's, just explain to us, what's the FAR, it consists, does it matter if it's two-story, one-story, five-story?
It does.
Okay, so how, how, what's the floor area can he do?
The floor area ratio is the percentage of habitable floor area in relation to the lot, whether it's one unit or five units.
Okay.
It's the total floor area ratio.
Okay, so that's fair enough, so I was wrong on the two floors, so he could do twelve fifty both floors, right?
Correct.
Okay, so but it still can be two units, right?
Can, by right.
Okay. There you go.
So we can. I'd like to make a comment here. Can I make a comment here, please?
I'm out, one at a time.
I, I think, I think what, I, I think what the abutters, and I know myself, the idea is, if it were, the FAR were smaller, perhaps the, uh, the owner of the property would be putting driveway on the property. And I think that that, if he had a driveway on the property for four vehicles, that would, I think the FAR, nobody would be, is so intent on the FAR and perhaps this would move forward somehow, but with no parking and asking for us to increase what's legally allowed, I don't know how as a board we can do that. When there is a huge issue, everybody knows it, I, I just don't know how it can be done.
All right, ma'am, ma'am, from the other, uh, she was speaking.
That's it. Okay, let me say something, um, I, I've been.
If I may, you do the same, you're a couple, right? It's the same house, okay, go ahead.
Sixteen A Ocean Avenue.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I've been to many, um, town board meetings, not here, but elsewhere. And usually when there's a coverage ratio presented, in this case, twenty-five percent of the five thousand square feet, it never says it doubles, it, there's no way i- in your ordinance does it say you can double the coverage ratio that I know of, the previous person who verified he can build two, is he the town engineer?
Oh, is it? Eh, eh, like, when, like I said, we're not gonna discuss other matters, the board has the power to double or triple, sir, listen to me. The board, I don't wanna talk about different towns. This board is designed by the state of Massachusetts or other states, whatever, these boards are designed to, they empower to double or triple if they feel it's fair. Now, you, if you disagree with our decision, if we come up to a favorable decision for the applicant, you could always appeal it under section forty-eight, section seventeen, I believe. So, but right now, we're discussing, everybody keeps coming back to the parking. Parking, it's not before us, it's the FAR.
Okay, so let's talk about the FAR, the FAR is.
Okay, so a bottom line, you are, you are against this gentleman, gentleman making the size house. That, that's what you're saying.
I, I'm saying that he has the right to build twelve hundred fifty square feet, that's correct.
Okay, very well, okay, anyway, I don't see this man gonna, if he finished tonight because we're gonna continue and we have a lot of hearings still. Uh, board members, you wanna comment anything before we continue?
I'll make one final comment.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, twelve hundred square feet or twelve hundred and fifty square feet makes a pretty good sized unit. So if you had two twenty foot, twelve hundred and fifty square foot units, you'd still have two reasonable units.
You only have one though.
Pardon me?
Yeah, one.
You can only have one.
One.
You can only have one, Jim.
You're only allowed one.
If we had two, that'd be seven hundred and something or some, no, that'd be fourteen, but it had to be six hundred and something per unit, Jim.
Which would be a funny looking house. Which would be a funny looking house on the.
But you can't do, but you can't do.
I don't want to look terrible. I don't want to look terrible.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, before you continue, may I or Attorney Morton add something?
Who's speaking, Anthony?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Um, there are a lot, there's a lot of misinformation going back and forth. And I, what, before we continue, I wanna be very clear about some numbers.
Yep.
Um, so our lot is five thousand four hundred and five square feet per our site survey.
Yep.
Twenty-five percent of that would give us one thousand three hundred and fifty-one square feet total floor area that we can build. We wanna build a two-story building. Um, at two stories, that would give us six hundred and seventy-five square foot units. Six hundred and seventy-five square foot units barely make the one-bedroom apartment definition by the town aware hence bylaw. Uh, cause minimum, um, unit size is six hundred and fifty square feet and it doesn't, and you can't get two bedrooms in six hundred and fifty square feet. Um, so.
Why does it have to be a two-family?
So our units as proposed for the two-family structure are each one thousand one hundred and fifty-two square feet. And our gross footprint for the building is one thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. So that's where our twenty-seven twenty comes from because we would like to build a two-story building. Um, additionally, there are three regulations that are being talked about simultaneously. Um, maximum building coverage, we meet, uh, for Onset Village one. Maximum building coverage in Onset Village one is thirty percent. We're at twenty-eight point four.
Thirty or thirty or twenty-five percent was the real number.
So there, there's, there are three things that we're talking about, building coverage, impervious surface and
Right.
floor area ratio, and they each have a different definition. So we meet two of the three definitions. So building coverage maximum is thirty percent, we are proposed at twenty-eight point four.
You mean the, the, the impervious area?
So impervious surface.
Yes.
Is seventy percent in Onset Village.
Yeah.
We are at sixty-five point three percent.
Okay.
So we meet the two criteria in the main density and dimensional regulations.
Okay.
We're here for floor area ratio. Um, because we have a five, uh, fifty-four hundred square foot lot at twenty-five percent of that, thirteen fifty for two floors is too small. It do, it doesn't work. There are far more intense uses that could be proposed for this particular lot that would wreak havoc on the neighborhood and the parking. Um, when the property was purchased, there was a tiki bar and a pool that garnered far more residents, patrons, cars, activity than a residential structure would do. So I just wanna bring it to everyone's attention that there are three different requirements, two of the three are being met. And make it clear that our number is actually thirteen fifty-one. Um, if we were to meet, if we were to meet by law, and we're at twenty-seven twenty, which brings us to the fifty-one percent that Attorney Morton started with.
Okay, very well, so, a, a board member, before we go forward, you, you, before we, hope, hopefully get a continuance, you wanna add anything else? Let's make it quick, it's getting late. Okay, if I hear none, let's get a motion to continue.
No move.
So motion to continue for January sixth, I have a second.
Second, Richard Sumpel.
Second, by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, Jim Akabachi.
Aye, Ivanka Debonis.
Aye, Jacob Morrison.
Okay.
Aye, Chris Conti.
All right, very well, it moved, it's, it's continued till January sixth.